Counselor Cologne Hayes.
Here.
Counselor Condon. Counselor Crowe.
Yes.
Counselor Linehan, absent. Counselor McDonald.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Seega. Counselor Semenelli. Counselor Spatafora. Counselor Taylor.
Yeah.
Counselor President Winslow.
Here. Next order of business. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those of you in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting. So just be aware, there will be audio and video recordings of this meeting. First order of business.
Kashana Harling will appear before the council with the presentation of upcoming goals for the 2024 year in her new capacity as the city's diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator.
Okay, okay, great, all right. So hello, I'm Kashana Harling. I'll reintroduce for, I think I know most of you, but for those who don't know, I'm a resident from Malden about 12, 15 years or so. I own a super small business here as well. I was previously in the role for about three years doing career services, so working with the Mayor's Summer Youth Program, and then just general career services with the youth and adults. Loved doing that, but then this job opened up, and I just really love my city and really kind of want to start to contribute here, so I decided to apply, and luckily I got it. So now I am the DI coordinator, just started in November, and I realize that it's a big task to undertake, so I've kind of tried to separate it into some kind of section so I can get some work done. So I gave, I distributed just a little kind of a working document that I'm kind of going off of, of some ideas that I want to do for the city and kind of just to help, and plans and events. I'm not sure about any or all that I will be able to accomplish, but these are my goals and some of the initiatives that I want to try. So starting point, the first thing I started doing is researching, learning about what has been done in the past in Malden, what different programs and accomplishments have already happened, so that way we can build on that and kind of not reinvent the wheel. So I've, so far, reached out to the mayor, Maria, some of the city councils I've met with, different community leaders and residents, just to kind of find out what groups and things that have already been formed or things that have been worked on. So, Community and Unity, Unity Malden 2020. There are a bunch of different things that people told me about, the wonderful things going on in the city, so that was my first step, to kind of gather that. Next, I built in this timeline, or this working document that I'm going to make a timeline for, and that's what you have in front of you, so just an idea of what am I going to do? There's a lot of stuff to do, where should I start? One of the biggest things I do want to do is the DEI strategic plan, so that way we can have a definite timeline, have some information on exactly what things that we want to do to kind of fix or work on things, and also to have that plan as a sort of accountability. So when you write things down sometimes and have this timeline, then it makes you kind of stick to, you know, you got to get some of it done, or find out a reason why you couldn't get it done. So that's the general idea of what I would like to do. Next, I kind of separated into some scopes, so the first one is internally, so in terms of actually being in City Hall and city staff workers. So I'm not going to read through all of it here, but just to, you see, I started with talking to department heads and meeting with them. One of the attached sheets I sent to you was the DEI assessment form, so when I did meet with them, I just kind of said, how are you feeling about DEI? Do you feel you need it? What are your concerns from the past, future? What are you thinking about? Am I even necessary to you? Did you know I was a resource, et cetera? So I've met with a few already, still have lots to go, but that's the start, and that's the form that I've been using. Next, I made a nice little information sheet, so just something for the staff where it's kind of explains a little bit about what DEI is, and you know, what do those letters stand for? What am I doing here and how can I help them? So it's just a quick little blurb and like a couple of questions to kind of say, what are you doing here? What can I use you for? And then my contact info. So so far, I've distributed it through city staff, and then I'd like to make one for the community, but for right now, that's what I've done for us. And then just some of the things I'll kind of skim through. I, once I've spoken with the departments, I'd like to work with HR, just to kind of give them the feedback on what I've heard at the different departments about different things. I'd like to work with them on the handbook, accountability, how to, or some type of process for, I guess, lower infractions such as microaggressions, and just the process so that when you might not want to say, oh, I want to get someone fired, you might just need some steps, or a warning, or counseling, or whatever. So I just want to kind of rework in and make sure DEI is into the handbook and into some of our processes, and not just hiring, you know, diverse workers. I also want to have accessibility be a big thing. I want people to know that I am here and available, and that I'm approachable, and that it's okay to come and talk to me. So I do want to have some of these things like DEI discussion hours. I think we're getting an Intranet, so I'd like to have a DEI page there where people can come in and speak, or get assistance, resources. And then also an anonymous area where people, where they might want to say something, and they're kind of nervous about giving their names, and a lot of these programs, you have to have your emails or at least something to connect you. So just some sort of anonymous line or link or something for people that want to share and maybe are a little bit nervous. And then there, the rest of the things are just some like events for the staff, so a pride luncheon, a cultural kitchen where you kind of, you know, can celebrate different cultures, and maybe it's like a did you know on a newsletter, that type of thing. Yeah, so that's for the internal scope. Next, the community and the city scope. So I don't just want to be a resource here, I'd like to have the community know that there's someone that they can kind of reach out to and be the go-between if necessary, et cetera, for some of these issues. So one of the ways that we did start was, we had a public meeting on DEI, that was February 7th, and just to kind of get community feedback, we did a SWOT analysis and kind of really heard what they, what our strengths were for the community, what our weaknesses, what they think we need to work on, and how. So I'd like to do a lot more of that, because I feel that one of the most important things is to try to reach people, and we're having a really hard time finding how to get some of the people that usually are not in these spaces into the community, or even to know about resources, events, et cetera. So, yeah, so same thing here, I'd like to have some DEI assistance, maybe some community outreach days where some office hours or something where they can come and reach out, or I can sit somewhere and they can come talk. I'm also working with the Racial Equity Commission, Human Rights, I'd like to kind of just know that I'm a resource there, or someone that is there for DEI for them. City Council, you can see you're in there as well. And then I have a teacher background, so education is super important, and I think that one way that we can kind of spread this DEI message is through education, trainings, workshops, talks, movies, et cetera. So I really would like to try to get some type of education series, whether people come in here monthly, weekly, whatever it is, just different ways that we can get some of these issues and information out to people, and some ways that will engage people to come and kind of be more active in the community, not just the same faces. And then, of course, I work with the youth, so I would love to have the Mayor's Youth Program, I've implemented some workshops for them, and I would love to have a DEI workshop, just maybe an hour-long that kind of introduces the, what is DEI to the youth, so that that way they can kind of have this foundation early, and then, you know, build on that as they go out into their careers. And then events, I would love to do, or revisit, we did a multicultural event a couple of years ago that I helped with, and I would love to kind of bring that back and some more kind of community events and ways for us to share. And last but not least, personal awareness and professional development. So I've done a lot of research on DEI and different places, and you may know that there's what they are saying, you know, a war on DEI. It's a very tough job, it's a lot of work to do, and it's work that a lot of people have been doing for a lot of years, and still there's a lot left to do. So I have to realize that I'm only one person, and that I will need some support and additional training, et cetera, education, so I really want to make sure that that's a part of my role here. So I do meet with my direct supervisor, Maria, weekly, and then I also meet with the mayor bi-weekly, just to kind of check in, give updates on what I'm doing, and I would like to use that as a time to kind of say, this is how I'm feeling, this is where I need support, help with, et cetera, and guidance, et cetera. And then, last but not least, is mental health, so I'd like to really work in just where I can find some supports within the community, within my staff supervisors, et cetera, but just something so I can make sure that I'm okay, so that I can help people be okay. So I just want to really be mindful of that, I think being personally aware of how to keep me mentally sane as the DEI coordinator for the whole city would be great. So just looking for resources and support and people to kind of assist me with my role. So that's it. Thank you very much for listening to me, I appreciate the time.
Yeah, thank you so much for this overview, Kashana, and it's been great to work with you to get our Racial Equity Commission of Residents also in gear now that you're in this role, and that group is really, you know, as you're focused on being able to support our city staff and leaders, that group, you know, is trying to chart some much bigger picture things for the city as a whole. So that's all just to say to my colleagues, and I'm sure we'll be back here talking about that in the coming year, but I just want to appreciate the thoughtfulness, the scope of this, Kashana. You know, you're the DEI coordinator, it's in your title, but it's really everyone's job, and so it's not that they should be helping you, it's that we're, it's a part of everybody's duty and responsibility, it's part of the city, and I just want to make sure that, you know, I think our city staff do hear that, but that they hear, you know, certainly from, I'll speak for myself as a city councillor, that I want to make sure that everybody treats it at that level of priority, and that that will create a much better opportunity for you to then succeed in your role and have that support as well.
Thank you.
And I'll just add that I'm also really excited that Malden's participating in this community of municipalities, where we have this once-a-month meeting with about a dozen other municipalities to talk about DEI work, Carol Anne and Maria are also on that team, I've been going as a representative of the council. So I'm really hopeful that we'll be building those best practices, honing the strategies in collaboration with our peers, and so, I don't know if you have any insights at this point from that process that you feel prepared to share. We have another meeting tomorrow, I know, but that's another exciting piece, I just want to make sure we didn't lose out on.
Oh, yeah, I totally forgot, it might be in there, but yes, it's the REACH program, and it's an amazing program, and we are meeting, we meet once a month, and we just talk about racial equity issues, and basically how to bring that back, or different ideas to the city, to be able to work on some of these DEI issues here. So far, we've had one meeting and work, a day workshop, and it was amazing. It's just a really great experience, and I'm super excited about getting some of that information to bring back to both the Racial Equity Commission and for everyone, actually. There's a lot of good information, videos that would be good to share with all of us, be good for us to see.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's so great to see you here, thank you. I'm happy that, congratulations, and we've worked together in the city, but also in the community, so part of my question on that, and this all looks great, and I'm just going to let you get to that, and we'll follow up at a certain time, but, community members, so I just wanted to know, if there's something that comes, like if a community member reaches out to me, they notice something, they have a question, are you also working with community members, or is that something that takes, like it's just too much, or not part of your role?
No, so actually, I've already had some community members reach out to me about some different issues that they had, and I've already had a couple of meetings just with them, and it was more to hear their concerns, to, about certain issues, like I'm not the police, I'm not, you know, not even the morality police necessarily, so it was more to share their concerns and want to be heard, and then I relayed their information to, you know, who needed to hear it. So I think it's more like a support and maybe a resource, a go-between, a person that can listen and know that they have someone to talk to and make them feel they belong.
That's fantastic, and much needed, so if someone were to call you, you could listen to their concerns and then maybe refer them out, like if they wanted to make a formal complaint, where they would go, or if they wanted services, or something, some other type of support, that is something that is under your purview?
Yeah, so for that example, they emailed me and expressed a concern, and then I, and they wanted to meet with me, and then I reached back out and said, is this something that you might need more support than just listening, or me listening and referring you? Do you need, you know, the police, or do you need some sort of resource counseling to be there? Because I'm not a councillor, so I did ask them what other methods or anything that they needed to have.
That's, thank you, that's great. And then also on the community part, I know myself, I've reached out to you, I'm on a few committees that are holding events, like Juneteenth, and again, I want to be very conscious of not overwhelming you with things, so if that's something that, if we can reach out and say, would you like to sit on this committee as part of like a connection to the city? Is that something that you could do?
Oh, yes, I would love to.
Okay, like the North Shore Hispanic Association?
One of the biggest ways to get people, I think, involved in the city is to do like events and things that bring you, I mean, people like to come for food, music, and fun and all that, so I'm all for whatever's going to actually bring people that aren't usually here, here. I love seeing the faces that we see, but we never see the ones that are just nervous about coming here, don't trust the system, or whatever it is, whatever their reasons are. So, yes, I would love to be on any committee that can bring people to Malden.
Perfect, thank you, then I will overwhelm you, and you can tell me when to stop.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
All right, yeah, Kashana, thank you so much for coming, I know it took a few months to have you come here, and this is, looks like a very comprehensive kind of framework that you're starting on, and even more work that's going on, so I think it's great, you got that big perspective, and you're also looking at making sure that, you know, working on, you know, making sure amongst all these challenges, that we're making sure that, keep it in balance, I think that's always the challenge. I know, I know when I was on the Public Safety Committee, I was very impressed in going over to the Police Department, and just how they have worked out to make sure they're recruiting, supporting, and recognizing, and promoting in a way that's really created a great and diverse police force that helps really serve the community, so I think that's the type of thing that, really working, and having you here and working on this broader initiative, to just make sure that we're doing that as a city, in terms of our services, in terms of our engagement with the community, so really appreciate that, and I'd love to sit down with you sometime to talk about that individually as well.
Sure.
But just, great, it's just a great first presentation, and look forward to your work going forward.
So am I, thank you.
Okay, Chris, who are you working on?
Thank you, Mr. President. Kashana, I just wanted to say, congratulations.
Thank you.
I know that you're going to do a terrific job, just like you did in the previous job with the Youth Summer Program. You know, I've, from the day I walked in the door, you know, you've helped me out, and shown me around, helped me with the backpack drive the first year that we did it there, and you did a tremendous job, you're well organized, and you're from Ward 7, so I just want to say, you know, congratulations.
I'm representing, there you go.
Keep up the great work, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thanks, Mr. President.
Hi, Ms. Harling, thank you so much for coming today.
Yep, no.
Wish you the best of luck in your new role, I'm really excited to work with you. I did see here on your, this anonymous DEI assistance request form, I would recommend you talk to the legal department just to make sure it's set up properly, only because I'm not sure how the public records law influences, interfaces with that.
Okay.
So you just want to make sure you, you talk to them to make sure it's set up the right way, and if there's an exemption, that it's properly documented, just so you know, to protect people's personal information. Thank you.
That's good to know, thank you.
Next order of business, a public comment. Is, we have no public comments that have been submitted, and there's nobody signed up on the thing, so we'll go to the next order of business then, consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved for council reappointments to the CPC, and one communication to be placed on file. Does any councillor have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for further discussion? Counselor Spatafora?
Is the plan to approve the CPC members on the floor tonight?
That's the discretion of the council, if you'd like to have that discussion, then we can, we can do that, but right now, the recommendation would be to approve them on the floor, but if there's...
Well, I would like to take up some of the councils in the last meeting, and that one have the ability to have all our people come forward and meet with them, so I would like them to go to personnel.
All right, so Counselor Spatafora is asking those to be taken out from the consent agenda, and then we can go from there.
So we're going to take those four out.
Okay.
That leaves just...
Well, that's my motion, it's not approved, so...
No, it doesn't take a motion, if you, if you want a discussion, then we'll discuss that, it would be on the consent agenda. All right, all right, and then councillor, let's see, all right, one second.
I'd like to remove the communication from the retirement board.
So off the consent agenda as well, sorry, so basically, so nothing's on the consent agenda at this point? Just the minutes, so the minutes remain on the consent agenda. So any, anybody want to take the minutes off, so, all right?
Motion to approve the...
Consent agenda, all right, which is the minutes, so, all right, although, let's see, councillor Linehan is not on, so we can do this by voice, so, all right, so all those in favor of approving the consent agenda as reduced, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the consent agenda with the minutes then, so then, I guess then the processes, then the items that are now off, we will discuss on what to do, so why don't we first take up the proposed reappointments to the Community Preservation Committee? Counselor Spatafora, did you want to talk about that further? We also have councillor Semenelli, did you want to talk further on that?
No, I would, I would...
Okay. Oh, let's see, okay, and then I'll have councillor Col...
Yeah, no, if, there's no disrespect to any of those members, I just want to take up the opportunity to ask them some questions, but that's certainly an important board, their task with investing the money, and I think they've been doing a tremendous job going forward, but I would, I would like to have them in and ask a series of questions, which we should be doing for all our boards and commissions. Thank you.
Counselor Cologne Hayes?
Yes, no, I would second that, and as long as it's following our ordinance, I do remember this coming up once before, councillor Crowe had, and I'm not sure if it's a rule, but that there wasn't, you wouldn't call someone in unless it's a reappointment, I just want to make sure I understand what's already on the books before I say that?
So...
Okay, okay.
There's no, yeah, I mean, I think it's always up to the discretion of the council of whether to send something to personnel appointments, so, so, all right, yeah.
Then I'll second that.
So we have that second, so why don't we, we'll just, I'll take up the other, councillor McDonald, so, yeah.
Yeah, I'm happy to chat with our appointees, I mean, if you'll all permit me. I just have to note that when I joined the council two years ago, I asked about this, and was roundly sneered at at this table for such regular review of appointments, so I'm, I'm not on personnel appointments this year, but I'm happy to chat with folks, because I think it's valuable. I just want to note, sort of for the public benefit, from my, from my understanding, speaking with you, councillor President, mine, that the logic behind who goes, who has gone on the consent agenda versus not, is that we were making sure that anyone who was up for, who was nominated for reappointment, or up for reappointment, who had served at least, I think, 20 years.
20 years, yeah.
Which was the threshold we had been talking about in our charter committee conversations last year, about requiring some kind of regular review, that we would start that practice. So I think that is, I think that's a really important conversation, I just want to say, like, I'm happy to talk with everybody, but I also think that at some point, there needs to be built-in regular review, I don't think that it necessarily needs to be every term, but I do think that's an important part of our process, to make sure that, you know, at a certain point of tenure, that we're having a robust process to review folks, and that's true for, that's true across the board or committee. Thank you, that's what I want to say.
Counselor O'Malley?
Yeah, I agree with councillor Spatafora about, and councillor McDonald, and councillor Cologne Hayes, I think we should be bringing in our appointees more often. One of the reasons being is, I do believe when we do not, gradually, there has been a misunderstanding of the relationship that these boards and commissions interface and play with the city council. I know that myself and others have experienced disrespect at some of these boards and commission meetings, and I think it's because they don't always know that we appoint them. I mean, I think they kind of know, but they don't realize that, like, they are accountable to us, and I'm not saying that these individuals here, or anyone we're currently discussing, are guilty of that, I think it's more of a group thing and not an individual thing, but I think that there is definitely a reason to bring in members of the CPC and other boards and commissions, and so I look forward to having that conversation in committee, thank you.
All right, yeah, no, and, yeah, I'm supportive of this as well, you know, I think that, you know, this actually is going to be the first round of CPC reappointments under the new changes to the ordinance, where these are the general appointees, so we're going from a focus of trying to make sure there's one representative on the CPC from every ward, to there's, there's five that this council appoints, and making sure that, under the ordinance, none of those five can be on the same ward, but, so I think if it's the will of the council, I'm willing as personal appointments to ask people to come in and have those discussions, and, I mean, in the meantime, the CPC will continue to go forward with their role, and then, you know, we can talk about then in committee, you know, reappointments there, so I'm supportive of that. Counselor Spatafora, yeah?
So I think one way we could, we could make this more efficient for everybody involved, certainly ourselves, is, I know it's sometimes challenging with open meeting law, but the idea, when in private sector, when you have interviews, there's always a series of standardized questions that everybody agrees to, not asking everybody to put their, you know, put all their questions on paper, but I think we should have some basic questions we ask every board, right, because we know, you know, the planning board does this, the, you know, the board of health does this, you know, we know their mission statement, so we should always have, you know, agree on a stable of questions that we all ask, you know, we can put pen to paper, ask them all those questions, then every council can go around and then ask their individual questions. I think that's just a better experience, certainly for those people being interviewed, and it creates also, I don't want to say a paper trail, but it creates a standard, when you interview these boards, you're adding the same series of questions. Again, I use interviewing process, or you do your annual reviews, your quota reviews, you know, you have a stable number of questions, and then you tailor to that individual's probably skillset or background, but I think that's something we should look, try to at least doing at the board level, some of those questions. Thank you.
So, so councillor Spatafora, I'd love to take, if you want to come up with some of those questions, I'd love to work with you, so, yeah, so, and since it's only two of us working on it, we're not a quorum of that committee, so we can, so maybe you and I, and then we can, we can put that at personnel, so, so, any further discussion, do we just then we, we have a motion to, oh, one more, councillor McDonald, yeah, so...
I would just ask that that list include a question to all boards and committees of how they can support the fiscal health of the future of the city, given that we've got some budget challenges ahead of us.
Okay, that's the head of finance speaking there, okay. Okay, all right, so councillor, clerk, please read the papers into the record, and then we will do a vote.
Counselor Spatafora's motion to refer the following four appointment papers into personnel appointments seconded by councillor Cologne Hayes. Paper 133-24, council reappointment of Brendan Brett, 32 Milton Street, Malden, as Ward 6 member of the Community Preservation Committee, appointed June 16, 2021, term to expire March 15, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 134-24, council reappointment, Monique Cheng, 153 Salem Street, apartment B R Malden, as Ward...
I'm sorry, yeah.
The microphone's on.
Yeah, let's see, okay, okay, I thought there, all right, sorry about that.
Appointed April 19, as Ward 5 member of the Community Preservation Committee, appointed April 19, 2022, term to expire March 15, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 135-24, council reappointment, Cameron Lane, 11 Grape Street, Malden, as Ward 7 member of the Community Preservation Committee, appointed January 23, 2020, term to expire March 15, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council. Paper 140-24, council reappointment, Rachel Running, 51 Belleville Street, Malden, as the Ward 8 member of the Community Preservation Committee, appointed July 31, 2020, term to expire March 15, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council.
So I actually just have a question for the clerk, because, because I think these, these papers actually are inaccurate, because people are not, no longer Ward 6 representatives or whatever, it should say of Ward 6, so I would just make a motion, if someone would make a motion that we strike as and put in of, that's, that's the intent, I wanted to make sure we reckon... make sure we recognize where people are, but they're not the Ward Six representative. People don't represent they can't have to be for different wards. So maybe if someone would maybe we first have to amend all the papers just to strike, you know, after Malden Mass as and put in the word of, and then we refer the committee because it's just clear under our new ordinance, we don't have Ward Representatives on the CPC anymore. But we do have to balance between the wards. So I just so I would, yeah.
An amendment to these papers be done in committee when they're discussing everything else?
I guess I'd just like to be clear on the record. I just we could we can make that amendment in the committee, so we will entertain that in committee. But I just want to make clear that that's sort of a typo we will correct in committee, that these are not being referred to as Award Six representative. These all these people are going to be serving the city, and we just have to recognize what ward they're from as we're making those decisions. So all right. So all those in favor of referring these papers to personnel appointments, say aye. Any opposed? All right. So those papers are referred to personal appointments, and I will work to schedule those. So and then we have the Cola paper. So you want to read that into.
Paper 141-24, Communication. Retirement Board respectfully submits to the council notice of the meeting to elect to grant retiree Cola.
All right. And so was there? All right. So you had a question about that, Counselor O'Malley? Okay, let's sorry. All right, Counselor O'Malley.
Yeah, I took this out because I do want to talk about it and make sure that we're aware. We just had a meeting earlier in our finance committee related to the challenges that we're going to be facing in terms of funding. There was, you know, discussion about the this kind of being the worst case scenario coming before us. And we didn't necessarily have a chance to completely flush it out. But I do think that some of the challenges that we're facing right now have been created by us ourselves and some of the decisions that we've made. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't necessarily grant a COLA to our retirees. But over the last couple of years, we did significantly increase the costs in our pension system. On page, I don't know, it's the 2025 budget highlights, you know, one of the things that was specifically highlighted is that there's over a $700,000 impact to the to the pensions annually. They're going to be pushing out the schedule, my understanding. But some of the decisions that we made have really put us in a precarious position, something to think about going forward. Obviously, it's nice to try to give everyone as much as we possibly can. But small decisions that we make do kind of exacerbate the funding challenges that we're going to be facing. So hopefully, it doesn't get to the worst case scenario that people are talking about. But, you know, I just want the retirement board to know that they are, you know, fiduciaries of our retirement and our pensions fund. And I hope they will make really good financial decisions and keep that in mind. I know Chuck Ranigan, our CFO, has been really beating down the hatch on that one and beating the drum. I've tried, and it's just something that it's not popular, but we have to make sure that we're looking for this. Thank you.
Okay. So I will just read what this the notice is so that we, as we're deciding just to put this on file. So this is what we received. Notice is being provided to the city of Malden that pursuant to General Law, Chapter 32, Section 103i and PIRAC memorandum, hashtag 042023, the above matter will be on the agenda of the Malden Contributory Retirement Board and its public meeting scheduled for Wednesday, April 17, 2023, at 8:30 a.m. So this is the so that's just they will be discussing that. And I think we've had some issues, like, sometimes this would come up in June or whatever, in the last minute. So this is just making sure the council is aware that this is being discussed and that type of thing. So I don't know if Counselor McDonald has any questions or updates on that. So yeah.
I do not.
All right. All right. So then, so I guess I entertain a motion to place this on file. That's all we got to do. Motion by Counselor Simonelli, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is placed on file. Next order of business.
Council will hold public hearings on National Grid petitions to install new poles.
All right.
First one is 96-24, petition Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, Anverizer New England Incorporated, Plan Number 30867469, National Grid to install one JO pole on Webster Street, beginning at a point approximately 32 feet east of the center line of the intersection of Webster and Laurel, installing new pole P 5016, about 56 feet east of existing pole P 5015 on Webster Street. Hearing required.
So let's see. All right. So do we have a representative from National Grid here tonight to come forward? So come forward, say your name and address and just talk about. Okay. Got it. Let's see. Sorry again. All right. So all right. All right. I got to be a little quicker on the mic. All right. There we go.
Cam Hansel, National Grid.
All right, Cam. Could you spell your last name, Cam?
Oh, H. H A N S E L.
Okay, like Hansel and Gretel. All right. Okay. All right, Cam. Yeah. So can just briefly explain the projects, and then we'll go from there.
So they're basically, there are basically two poles that are going to be put in to have grid monitoring equipment, which will basically help with reliability of the grid in Malden.
All right. Does anybody have any questions on this? Okay, all right. There we go. Counselor O'Malley stepped out. I should actually should have asked him to step in as counsel pro temp because these are in Ward Six. So maybe I got to see if Counselor O'Malley is here. Counselor Spatafor, why don't you speak? And I got to get Counselor.
Do you want me to wait for you?
Yeah, if you want to wait.
I'll wait because I don't know if you know, I don't want to.
Yeah.
Joe Ward.
You can introduce them. You just can't debate them.
Okay.
Can't debate them.
All right. So Counselor O'Malley is going to sit in as pro temp because these are Ward Six. Go ahead. So just starting, just starting the hearing. So.
I call the meeting to order. Are there any the hearing to order?
Public hearing.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
He already did.
Okay.
Is there anyone else in favor who would like to speak in favor of the petition?
I had a question, though. I was waiting for Steve.
Okay.
Counselor Spatafor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. So can you when you say Cam, is it Cam?
Yes.
So Cam, when you say monitoring equipment, can you tell me what that means?
They're.
So you're putting a pole up, right? A normal telephone pole, right? And what's going to be on the pole?
They're basically these little.
Oh, I didn't open up the attachment. Do you mind if I see this? I'll pass it around. And what do those three little thingies do?
They're just basically equipment that monitors if there's any, like, faults or anything, it can that are like, that are repeating in the same area, it'll be able to tell you where it is to be able to address it and make improvements to the system.
So why do you need another pole? Why can't you put those three units on existing pole?
The existing poles have equipment on them already.
Okay. And there's nowhere else you could and again, these are questions are not towards you. I just I just hate seeing us just add more stuff to the sidewalk just for three little I know they're important, but three little devices that look like they can go on any any pole within that area. So that's the only pole in that vicinity to add, they look like nodes or some type of is it a node?
I'm not sure exactly what the.
Okay.
Name exactly is.
All right. I'll yield to the, you know, I know the Ward Council's got some questions, but that's just my concern. Just adding a pole for that seems to be a little bit overdone. So I'll I'll give back my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Spatafor. Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, so I did meet in the field. There's actually several of these. I mean, this relates because in Ward Six and eight, there's the National Grid substation that's right there off of Broadway. Essentially, there's a couple of things. We just had all the hearings about, you know, improving and upgrading the the equipment in the substation to make that more reliable and go from analog to digital technology. So there's several, you know, so what's happening is within a certain length of feet from the substation, they're looking to put this extra monitoring equipment. So if there's some power shortage, you know, or fault, this will help act more quickly. And and it has to be between before, I think, the first set of transformers. So there's there are specific criteria that National Grid is doing for these, and it needs to be a certain distance. And so it's basically going in between two poles. It is and I have met and gone out in the field and tried to, you know, haggle exactly, you know, make sure they're in a good location and stuff like that. So so I I've been supportive. They made some adjustments in that type of thing with it. And it is essential to, you know, we have people who rely on the grid for maybe oxygen and other important things. So this is just to increase the reliability of the grid. And it's, you know, as we heard, as we were approving the improvements to the substation, that's a mandate, you know, coming down from the, you know, regional, you know, way, grid operator or whatever. So that's it's sort of interrelated. They're upgrading this equipment to be reliable. And, you know, it has to be in line. And this is, you know, there's like, three other locations right in the neighborhood that have that done. So one of them, like, on Broadway is up, and then there's one that we're kind of still haggling on Eastern Avenue. But it's these need to be located between the first sort of line of service and the substation to help, you know, make sure that if any faults come up, they're dealt with quickly, and it creates reliability. So that's my understanding. And they have, I have met in the field, and we've worked out that. So so I'm supportive of this. So thank you.
So, Counsel President Winslow, your comments will be entered into the record as in favor of this petition?
Yes, thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward. Hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed.
We have to ask if there's anybody in opposition.
Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. The hearing is closed. Is there any motions? Are there any motions?
So I would make a motion to approve this petition with their standard conditions.
On Counselor Winslow's motion to grant the petition, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, with the following conditions, one, that the engineer be called when dig safe is notified, and two, that the streets and sidewalks be restored to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The petition is granted. Thank you.
All right. We have another one.
Paper 97-24, petition Massachusetts Electric Company, DBA National Grid, Anverizer New England, Inc., Plan Number 30867467, National Grid to install one JO pole on Lebanon Street, beginning at a point approximately 66 feet southwest of the center line of the intersection of Hartson Street in Lebanon, and continuing in approximately 31 feet in a southwesterly direction, installing new pole number 2426, about 31 feet southwest of existing pole P 2427 on Lebanon Street. Hearing required.
I declare the public hearing open. Anyone wish to speak in favor of the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Cam Hansel, National Grid.
Would you like to describe the petition?
Oh, it's basically this. It's the same as the previous poll, just grid monitoring equipment for improved reliability.
Thank you. Those will be entered in favor. Is there anyone else in favor of the petition? Counselor Winslow?
Yeah, again, I did go out and speak with National Grid, and we made any adjustments in the field. This was a location that was well selected. It's sort of near where Patrick's and Franny's is, but it's it's at a location that's in between the other poles. It doesn't block any doors or anything like that. So it's as good a location as you can have in the square there. So so and it'll be aligned with the other poles. So I'm so I'm in favor, supportive of this as a way to get more reliable electrical service.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition to the petition, please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Hearing none and seeing none, I declare that portion of the hearing closed. Are there any motions to approve?
Motion to approve the petition. Motion to approve the petition?
On Counselor Winslow's motion to grant the petition, seconded by Counselor Simonelli, with the following conditions, one, that the engineer be called when dig safe is notified, and two, that the streets and sidewalks be restored to the satisfaction of the Director of Public Works. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? The petition is granted.
All right.
Next order of business.
All right. Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. All right. So back to this. So next, I did have a request from our legal counsel, Zaher, to move up the discussion of the open meeting law complaints so that we can get he just had another commitment. So Zaher, would you like to come up? And why don't we so I guess, does anybody object to moving that up and taking that out of order? So we going to so Clerk, could you read the papers related to open meeting law communications? Thank you.
Paper 55-24, Communication. Legal Department respectfully submits to the council written response to the open meeting law complaint regarding alleged violations of January 2, 2024 for review and ratification.
Do you want to take one at a time?
So yeah, why don't we take the the first paper, 5524, which is the let's take that paper first, and then we can talk about the other ones. So yeah.
So.
Okay, so yeah, like, okay, so Counselor O'Malley, yeah, so.
I move to receive the communication from the legal department.
So Counselor O'Malley's motion to receive the communication from the legal department, seconded by Counselor Seeca. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. The communication received, and then we will, Mr. Zahami, can can you speak to the purpose of the communication and talk about your recommendation?
Sure. So this is this is the first deals with the first of a series of three complaint open meeting law complaints by Brian DeLacy. This complaint was originally filed on January 2, 2024. And what you have before you in this paper is my response to his complaint, I believe. Yeah, it's Paper 143-24 is my response to his complaint, I believe. Actually, I'm sorry. Paper 55-24 is my response. So I unfortunately got a little bit delayed in sending out this response. The response, I believe, was due February 9. This city council didn't actually meet to review the complaint until, I think, January 30. So that didn't leave a lot of time to do an investigation. You probably remember, I actually contacted each of you to do a thorough investigation, did my investigation. Some of you were on vacation, and it just didn't get done until mid January, mid February. So on February, I believe, 20th or thereabouts, yeah, actually, February 20, I submitted my response. And my understanding was that the city council had authorized my office to respond. And just in case you wanted to review it, I have submitted it to you here in this communication for your ratification and approval. I believe my my understanding was that we were authorized to send the response without your having any need to review it. Certainly, if I wanted you to review it, I would certainly if I had questions, I would submit it to you before sending it out to the complainant. But I thought that, you know, I had that authority. So that's what I did. But it's here before you now in this open meeting for ratification. And if you have any questions about it, I'm happy to to speak to them.
So Counselor O'Malley?
I had had a chance to review it, and I would move to ratify your response to the open meeting law complaint.
All right. So motion to ratify this. Can just just for technical. Can, just, just for technical purposes, can you explain a little bit what it means to ratify something kind of after the fact, just in a legal sense of whatever?
Yeah, sure. It just means that the, the response that, that you're basically approving, the response that I have already made on your behalf. You know, normally, when you approve something, it's, you review it first and then you approve it, but if you ratify something that's already been done, you essentially approve it after the fact retroactively, assuming that's even required or necessary.
Okay. So any discussion on the motion? All right. So all, do we need a roll call on this, or can we, all right, so all those in favor of ratifying the, ratifying the response to the complaint, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so the council has ratified that that was our response to that first open meeting law complaint. So let's go on to the next order of business, and otherwise, it's placed on file.
Paper One Forty-three dash twenty-four, the Malden City Council will address the open meeting law complaint submitted February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four by Brian DeLacy, One Earl Street, Malden, against the council related to the handling of a previous alleged violation named OML complaint, January twenty-two, twenty twenty-four, numbered and known as Paper Fifty-five dash twenty-four.
Okay, on Counselor O'Malley's motion to accept the communication?
So moved.
And seconded by Counselor Simonelli, all those favors, say aye? All right, opposed? All right, so that we've accepted the communication, and Counselor, please explain what's related to this open meeting law and your recommendation thing.
So, as I mentioned, this, there were three open meeting law complaints by Brian DeLacy since the beginning of the year. This is, has to do with the second one. So we have a second complaint by Brian DeLacy about the city council and my response to the first complaint. So the second complaint was filed with this council on February twenty-sixth, I believe, is the date, yeah, February twenty-sixth. So I reviewed it, I started preparing a response, and I figured I had a pretty good handle on what the response should be, so I drafted a response, and since I knew I was going to appear before you today anyway, I figured I'd submit it to the city council in advance for review and answer any questions you have, and if you don't have any, if you approve it, I will send it out, proofread it, and send it out tomorrow.
Okay. So this is the...
And this is, just so you know, this is the one, two, three, three page, three and slightly more than three pages, that there's a watermark of draft on the document, and it's a letter from me dated March thirteenth.
Yeah, and so it is on, in grandicus, if anybody...
To Brian DeLacy.
If you want to take a minute to look and...
I can summarize it for you if you like.
Okay, if you can summarize.
Sure. So one of the things he alleges in his complaint was that by, I guess, interviewing all of you as part of my investigation, that that was somehow serial communication among all of you. I don't know how that's possible because I clearly spoke to each one of you individually, and as far as I know, there were no recordings or anybody listening secretly in on our communications. So my response to him basically says that you have no basis to allege that there was serial communication, and the reason I interviewed every single city councillor was just to be thorough. So the response says there was no serial communication, as he alleges, and basically, you know, gives some reasons, and one of the reasons is that that's basically kind of absurd because it would basically mean that, you know, an attorney for a public body basically could never speak to more than a quorum of a public body in order to give them legal advice or receive information in order to formulate a response on their behalf. And, you know, even if a journalist, for example, a member of the public wanted to write a story on a matter of public concern, and they, you know, independently called, you know, several members of a public body and interviewed them and, you know, asked for their input, and it was all done independently, if Brian DeLacy's position is correct, well, that would also be, you know, a violation of the open meeting law, which is kind of absurd. So basically, I tell him that he hasn't made out an allegation for serial communication in violation of the open meeting law, and I specifically requested that he provide any, you know, substantiating information, and he declined. You know, I asked him for, actually, a lot of information, which, you know, I'd be happy to review if I got, but then I require, he declined. I asked him to provide anything, please, anything you have. I'd be welcome, I would welcome, so I could review it as part of my investigation, and he declined to provide any substantiating information. That's it.
And so that's a, Counselor O'Malley had a question?
I appreciate you providing this response. I think one of the, obviously, I was in favor of the last paper. I think one of the confusions here, and it's actually, like, from a good governance perspective, it is, it is actually nice to see the responses and to be able to review and know what we are saying as a body, and we're empowering the legal department, so I think this is actually a good step forward. The only question I, well, the question I had is, you had just said about a journalist, like, I think there's a difference between you, our legal staff, as an agent of the city council, and a journalist, which is not an agent, because you act on our behalf, a journalist does not. In your, on page two, you say there's no requirement that the city council substantively discuss your complaint at any level of detail. I'm assuming that that also means that we don't have to approve the response, and I was of the same understanding that you were, that when we voted to empower you to respond on our behalf, we had given you the authority to do that. But i- is there, is it true that the, our solicitor or our legal representatives cannot talk to a quorum unless we have, like, a posted, like, executive session or a meeting? I think that's a gray area that I'm still not clear on.
Well, I think it's pretty clear that a non-member of a public body can communicate with, you know, a member, and it's not a violation of the open meeting law. And the city solicitor, you know, we might be the city's attorney, we might be your attorney, and the public body's attorney, not your individual attorney, in certain circumstances, but we're still not a member of the public body. So we're not a member of the city council, so, you know, it's not, you know, that's an important difference. We're not, my communication with a number of you doesn't mean you're communicating with each other, just because I happen to separately communicate with a number of you.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. I think that, I think there's a difference between you doing a fact-finding mission investigation and, like, the development of, like, public policy, for instance, like, there would be a difference there. When do we need to respond to this one by? Is it fourteen days from today, or fourteen days from when he...
It's fourteen business days from the day of the complaint, which was February twenty-sixth.
Do we know what that ends up being?
I think it's Thursday.
This Thursday?
I think it is. I think it's Thursday.
Oh, okay. Yeah, because we had the, okay, because we had the election. Okay, thank you.
All right. Any further questions? I guess, just, and just to be clear, related to the initial investigation, you asked councillors questions about their activities related to the election of council president. You did not share what one councillor expressed with another one, right? So that's...
Absolutely not.
Okay.
I never, I never said, oh, well, by the way, you know, councillor one told me this, and, you know, I shared that with three other councillors. I mean, no, I absolutely didn't do that. That would defeat the purpose. I have no interest in doing that. I mean, I'm interested in finding out what the facts are, not what somebody, you know, not sharing information between, relaying information between city councillors.
Thank you. Any further questions from the council? So we can enter, okay, all right, so, all right, so Counselor Sika makes a motion to approve the draft response as our own response, seconded by Counselor Crowe. Any further discussion? All right, okay, good. All right, all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, so that, that draft is now our recommendation, so, and a response. And then there's the third and final, so can we...
Paper One Forty-four dash twenty-four, the Malden City Council will address the open meeting law complaint submitted March sixth, twenty twenty-four by Brian DeLacy, One Earl Street, Malden, against the council related to the handling of a previous alleged violation named OML complaint, February twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, which also stems from the original OML complaint dated January twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, numbered and known as Paper Fifty-five dash twenty-four.
All right, Counselor McDonald's motion to accept the communications, seconded by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we accept the communication. Solicitor, please talk to us about this one.
So this is the, the third open meeting law complaint by Brian DeLacy and Malden News Network, and in this, he alleges that my, my response to the February twenty-sixth complaint somehow also amounted to a violation either by me or the city council of the open meeting law. So because this was only made very recently, I didn't have a chance to prepare a written response to this, but, actually, I did prepare a written response, but it's not final, but it's relatively short, and I was hoping I could read the gist of it to you, and if you approve it, I could finalize it and send it out in the, within this week, if you're okay with that. Or if you want to actually review the whole thing, we can do that. But basically, what Mr. DeLacy and the Malden News Network allege in this open meeting law complaint is that by requesting information on behalf of the chair, which is the council president, information from him substantiating his previous complaint, I violated the open meeting law, and that the public body responded to this complaint without meeting in person in an open meeting, and that was a violation of the public meeting law. And I have a response to those, if you want to hear it. Like I said, it's going to be what I write in my letter.
Why, you want to do that, and then we can have discussion?
So, Mr. DeLacy, your complaint dated March sixth alleged that the Malden City Council violated the open meeting law. This letter is a response to you. As best as I can understand, you allege a violation because, one, with authorization from the chair of the Malden City Council, I requested from you information substantiating your complaint, and, two, the public body responded to your complaint without first reviewing it at a meeting. The first is not a violation, and the second is false. First, there is nothing in the law or regulations prohibiting the chair of a public body from authorizing council to request information from the complainant pursuant to the regulations. Second, the March fourth and fifth communications between you and my office were not a response to your complaint. They simply asked that you produce any information substantiating your complaint, including specific categories of documents, and even offered you the opportunity to come testify under oath and have your testimony transcribed. You seem to be confusing a request for information about a complaint with a response to the complaint. The public body has only seven days from the day of the complaint for its chair to request information. There's no requirement that there be a meeting to review the complaint before requesting more information. Finally, you complain that my information request establishes an atmosphere of compulsory legal process on the public, press, and private citizens. On behalf of my client, I can only try to understand what your allegations are, investigate if there is any substance to them, and respond appropriately. There's nothing remotely compulsory about my information request. You have a right to complain, and the public body has a right to request specific substantiating information for the purpose of investigating the complaint. More importantly, one would expect any conscientious member of the public who thinks there's an open meeting law violation to offer something, anything, specific beyond pure speculation and bare naked conclusions. Once again, there are no facts to reasonably support the violations alleged in your complaint, which is as airy as the atmosphere of which you complain. There was no open meeting law violation. Sincerely, Zaher Semien.
All right. So Counselor Sika.
Thank you, Council President. So Zaher, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this third open meeting law violation. He is suggesting that you didn't get permission from us in order to contact him for information regarding the third open meeting law violation?
Well, no, I did get permission, and he knows I got permission because...
But from the first one?
It's the second one, right?
You got permission from Counselor Winslow, right?
So he's saying I didn't get permission, well, now, he, what he's saying is that the fact that I requested information with...
Without coming to us first.
No, I did come.
But you went to...
I went to the chair, and the chair has authorized me to request information. He knows that. He's saying, even though you got authorization from the chair, you can't do that. That's what he's saying, and that's a violation, and I'm telling him it's not a violation.
So every open meeting law that we receive throughout the city of Malden, I'm pretty sure that our legal department probably reaches out to others regarding whatever the open meeting law violation would be before actually getting permission from us for a response or handling the situation. Am I correct? Because I'm pretty sure you, I was out a few weeks at the end of January, beginning of February, so I don't know when the open meeting law was voted on, but I'm sure you reached out to us before we gave you permission based on Counselor Winslow's permission.
Yeah, for the first open meeting law complaint?
Yeah, the first one.
The first one. This is a little confusing, so we have open meeting law violations on open meeting law violations, which to me is just making, on open meeting law violations. So it's kind of, I just want to, like, when we've just first started reading this, I said, wait, we just gave him a written, we just gave him approval to respond to the February twenty-sixth, but we already have an open meeting law violation on that open meeting law violation before we even responded to it?
Yeah.
Because you called him and asked for information to back the claim of the open meeting law violation. I just, okay, okay.
I'm getting confused, but, yeah.
Okay. So you need, you need a motion to, what is, what do you need for this one?
So the, the letter that I just read to you, I'm going to add some legal mumbo jumbo citations to the regulations and whatnot, but other than that, the substance of the response is the same, is what I just read to you, and if you approve my sending it, I'd be happy to send it tomorrow. That will save, you know, putting it on the agenda again.
Yep.
I make a motion to approve Zaher's response to the third open meeting law violation on the two previous open meeting law violations, if that's...
Okay, motion then seconded by Counselor O'Malley, and then, and so then, Counselor McDonald, do you have a comment?
I do. I, I feel like I tried to ask this last time, but I just want to make sure, this is feeling a little, a little bit like a game, and I just want to know, is there any way to just pre-authorize our legal department to respond to any complaints you deem specious that all stem from the original complaint? I mean, like, we could be just doing this forever, and obviously, I think if you have a question, come to us, but I just, this seems silly.
It is. It, no, it is silly. As far as pre-authorization, I think, I think you have to at least meet in person. You have to at least meet in person, look at the complaint, and refer it to our office. You don't have to discuss it in any detail like we're doing now. You could just say, you know, we've considered it, and we want our legal counsel, our solicitor's office, to investigate and respond. That's fine. You don't have to discuss it in any detail. So in the future, though, I can tell you, one potential procedure that we can use is, well, I'll leave it at that.
Okay.
In, in that case, and I understand that, and I understand needing to give you the appropriate authorization and so on, so I appreciate that, but I just might ask, like, maybe we could just put some of these on the consent agenda for referral, you know, in the future?
Okay, sure.
For this case or any other cases. If they're pretty routine, I'd be open, I would be, I would offer that as a possible suggestion to the chair. Thank you.
All right, great. Counselor O'Malley?
I just wanted to clarify for the record, I seconded Counselor Sika's motion for this one, and I voted present for the last one. And one of the reasons being is I'm a little, I was a little confused on the last one, and they are all kind of intertwined, so I'm currently refreshing my memory on the last one, which is related to this one, so we're, we're good. I, I think the confusion that I have is that, and I am in favor of responding for this one, because I don't think it's a violation for you to, to instruct our legal team to ask for more information. I don't think that's a violation. The, the question on the last one really turns on whether or not we have to... to review open meeting law complaints and draft responses prior to them being sent back. I'm thinking that we do, just reading the complaint, but this is a complaint from the complainant, not what we're saying. And then there's another dynamic here that is still not clear to me, because we used to have a lot more executive sessions than we do now. And that question is whether or not our counsel, our legal counsel, can meet with us outside of a publicly posted meeting. I don't know if this is, I, I, it would be weird for him to, to fabricate it, but there's, there is supposedly an open meeting law determination, which is Plymouth District v. Middleborough, which says, quote, "Communication between council and a quorum of a public body may occur only during a properly posted open meeting or during an executive session held for one of the enumerated things." And it's just, it's something that is, I think, an outstanding question. It doesn't necessarily impact that I am in favor of this response, but I wanted to clarify my present vote on the last one. Thank you.
Hi, Council Sika.
Council O'Malley, I think, I think you're getting a little, this is more of a little bit of, like, a common sense thing. So we can't leave this, we can't leave the city council chamber and go to Exchange Street Bistro with a quorum of any committee of this council, including the council, and have a discussion of anything that is before us. So we can't meet with the legal department, not in the public with a, a, am I correct to say that, city clerk?
Yes.
So, so, I, I don't understand what you're confused about, then. Because what, Zahir, um, what's the word I'm looking for? Him talking about a reporter reaching out to us, we couldn't, we, five of us that are on one committee couldn't meet with a reporter to discuss a topic that's before us. So it is no different than the report, I think that's where you kind of got a little confused, was the, the comparison of the, yeah. I would love you to, because I'm confused at what you're confused about.
Yeah, no, and, and that's the reason why I was, like, on the second one, I was a little bit like, oh, wait, can, like, when is this need to be responded by? Because, as you all know, I, I, I try to pride myself in knowing the open meeting law, so when there's a gray area, I'm, I'd like to take, take it slow. So, like, I don't know if this is true or not, I haven't had a chance to, to look it up, but allegedly, according to the district attorney for Plymouth District v. Board of Selectmen of Middleborough, open meeting law, da-da-da-da-da-da, "Communication between council and a quorum of a public body may occur only during a properly posted open meeting or during executive session for one of the ten enumerated purposes." And so the question would then be, if our legal team emails us all something, is that a, is that allowed or not? To me, it's not clear right now.
It is, as long as you don't hit the respond, reply all button. Am I correct?
And that's how we've operated, but it's, it's not clear, and I'm just going off of what I've read here, but again, this was provided by that complainant, so I don't know if it's 100% true, but it doesn't really impact this. It was just me trying to explain why on the last one I was a little bit not clear and really not ready to vote. But yeah. I second your motion, Council Sika.
That's a case where, I mean, that's a statement of law that's correct, but what that's saying is that if you're going to, if a quorum of the city council or a public body is going to meet with their attorney, they need to do it either in executive session or an open meeting properly noticed. You can't all go with me to, you know, Fajitas or whatever, and, you know, we can hash out Santa Fe Grill, yeah, sorry. I don't know, I want to make sure we have the facts straight, because if there's another open meeting law-
[laughing]
Right. So, see, we, we can't always go, we can't all, you know, go over margarita, have margaritas at Santa Fe and talk about legal stuff that's going to come before the council, because that's not a properly noticed open meeting. So that's what that case is talking about.
That's what I, that's, that's how I understood what you were saying, so that's why I was confused, why you were confused, because we can't, we can't go and, we can't, we're worried about going and having drinks, and, and we can't have any conversations about anything as colleagues or counselors anywhere. So I'm, I'm just, I was just confused, so thank you.
And, and I agree with you 100%. It was just, I, I don't know if functionally the, that situation is, is different than an email chain, which I agree, you don't respond back. It's, it's still, I, I, I agree with what you're saying. That's definitely prohibited. The, the question is also, based on what I just read, which I don't know, is both ways communication prohibited? Obviously, we can't all communicate that direction, because that would be an open meeting law violation. The question is, can legal communicate to us?
They have, yes.
That, that, that's the unclear situation.
The other thing is, you know, I, I deliberately was careful in contacting each of you not to have a string, an email, you know, multiple people on a single email, or have a phone call in which there were multiple people, like a conference call. I mean, it was deliberately done that way to maintain the integrity of the investigation and, you know, avoid, avoid violating the open meeting law in, you know, in another way. So, you know, I think the allegations that Mr. DeLacy are making, I mean, they're a little, they're a little ridiculous, really. I mean, he doesn't have any specific information other than these just sort of blanket conclusory allegations that he's making.
So, Council Hayes?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, thank you for all your work in, in this. I just wanted to clarify for myself, to make sure I understood this correctly. So, because when we received this, I went through my emails to make sure, I'm like, did I get, did someone ask me if you can respond? Like, so it looks like what you're saying is that the council president could have answered for all of us, and that's okay, like, to say, respond.
He was asking for information.
Yeah, that's not a response. So, one of the things he's complaining about is around March 4th or 5th, I reached out to Mr. DeLacy-
Mm-hmm.
-and said, can you please provide me, I'd love to get all this information, I'd love to have you come over and testify under oath to see what you know, because I'm interested if you think there's an open meeting law violation. And he said, no. And I said, well, give me anything. That wasn't a response.
Right.
Okay? That was a request for information for which I obtained authority from the public body's chair, which is Council-
That's, okay, that's-
Council President Winslow.
Okay. So you obtained, you can go in the future, if, you know, onto-
He can do it himself.
He can do it himself, okay.
You know, I, I mean, I-
Great. Okay, I wanted to know that, because I did start scanning through, like, did I receive that? So we don't have to receive that. He can make this decision. Okay.
Yeah, that's in the law.
Perfect. All right, so then, and we don't have to review, just repeating back what I heard here, make sure I heard it right, we don't have to review your response before you send it out, as it is today.
Unless you want to, you know, you don't have to review it.
Yeah, but we don't have to, that's just the question.
And frankly, if I, if I have any questions, or I want you to review my response, because I'm uncertain about something, you know, I'll come before you. You know, if I'm not confident in my response and I need input from you guys, you know, I'm going to come before you before sending a response out on your behalf, as I would with any client.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I just want to make sure I heard that right.
All right, thank you, Council Colan Hayes. Um, yeah, no, Zahir, good, good preparation here. I mean, I do think just that the kernel of it is, when you do an investigation, one of the things investigators always do is make sure you don't have a room full of people that you're investigating, because then it, then we would get accused of collusion or something like that. So I think that the methodology that the legal office uses is the appropriate thing to investigate an open meeting law complaint, and, you know, is what the conclusion, the, it was never, the results were never discussed with me or any individual counselor in terms of what response was. So I think it's, that is fair. So, you know, we simply answered the councilor's question. So, so, all right, so we have the motion to approve the substance of the response to open meeting law complaint, number three, by Council Sika, seconded by Council O'Malley. Any further discussion? All right, so all those in favor of that, say aye. Any opposed? All right, so that is, responses thereby approved? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Great, great work. Thank you. All right, so, going back to the order of business.
Paper 460-23, be it ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden, 6.16.040, Regulation of Sale of Flowers, Flowering Plants, and Christmas Trees is hereby amended by striking and Christmas trees from the title, be it further amended by striking Section C in its entirety and renaming Section D to Section C.
So this is, where this is under enrolled ordinances, so on Council McDonald's motion to ordain the ordinance, seconded by Council Sika. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The count, the ordinance is thereby ordained. Next order of business.
Paper 10-24, be it hereby ordained by the Malden City Council that the code of the city of Malden be amended by updating Title II, Chapter 20, Sections 030, 040, 050, and 060, as is related to non-union employee compensation by adding a 3% cost of living adjustment effective July 1st, 2023, to the officer, specialist, clerical, and unclassified salary schedules.
So, on Council Crowe's motion to ordain the ordinance, seconded by Council Condon, we'll get, Paul, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That ordinance is ordained. Next order of business.
Paper 142-24, Communication from Council President Winslow Regarding Community Preservation Committee Ward Member Vacancies. The Malden City Council is seeking one resident from either Ward 5, Ward 2, Ward 3, or Ward 4, who is interested in serving on the Community Preservation Committee. This committee advances smart growth, sustainable development, preservation of open space, historic sites, affordable housing, and development of outdoor recreational facilities within the city in accordance with the rules and ordinances of the city of Malden. The selected individual will be expected to possess interpersonal skills that will allow them to work cooperatively with both fellow committee members and elected officials. Interested residents are required to send a cavaletta, together with a resume, to Council President Stephen Winslow no later than Wednesday, March 27th, 2024, to
Okay, so on Council Spatafor's motion to receive the, the communication, seconded by Council Colan Hayes, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, um, just, just, I want to speak a little bit about this. So, under the ordinance for the Community Preservation Committee, community, there's the five general members, they can serve up to three terms. Chair, I guess vice chair now, Lisa Solder, term is, she's served three terms, so she is sort of term limited out. So this is advertising for that. I, I guess one thing I wanted to talk about, because we, we are bringing all the members, should, should I delay, delay seeking further things, or should we go ahead and advertise for these, that specific seat? So, is everybody in agreement to go ahead as a communicator? So I will further spread, Council O'Malley, great. All right, yeah. Go, let's see, go, go ahead, Council O'Malley.
So I just want to make sure that I understand, any, any board or commission member will continue to serve until their replacement is selected. So, so there's no particular rush, like, Ms. Solder will continue to serve until replaced, right?
Yeah, so under the ordinance, the, the, any sitting community preservation committee member sits until the council nominates a new person. So-
Okay.
So they, they would, so during the interview, until I think that someone is nominated. So, you know, that's, that's what the ordinance says, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, great. All right, so then I will make that communication, and we'll go forward on that basis. All right, thank you very much. Next order of business.
I believe that's-
Okay, so it looks like the docket is clear, and then would anyone like personal privilege? So-
Are we in TV mode?
No, it's, yeah, two weeks.
Two weeks.
So, all right, so we have Council Colan Hayes, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements. A group of community members have come forward, and they are holding a Malden Community Health Fest. It's going to be during the first week of public, is it, Public Health Awareness Month, and they're going to be doing it in the Salemwood School Field House, April 6th, that's a Saturday, from 11:00 to 3:00. We've already have maybe over 20, almost 25 tables of really good information. I've been working with them, so I hope people attend. And you can still, there's still some time if you want to have a table. So you can reach out, too, you can email maldencommunityhealthfest@gmail.com. And then the second is, we are having our second, which is going to be annual, Juneteenth Music Bingo fundraiser. So we're raising funds to do our Juneteenth event, which we hold every year. That's been a great success, and that is Friday, May 17th, 6:30 to 8:30 at the Irish American. It was a lot of fun last year. You can get teams, it's, it's only $30, that includes five cars, there's prizes, and you basically play bingo with song titles. And we're really trying hard to, and based on this discussion earlier, raise our own funds as much as possible, so that we don't, you know, we have a limited amount that we ask from other people in grants. So if you could attend that, that would be great. And then the last thing is, the North Shore Hispanic Association is having their annual fundraiser, and that is Thursday, April 25th. We have some great honorees, I think I already mentioned them, but the council, the president, Gladys Rivera Rogers, was supposed to be here tonight, but she asked me to let you all know, you'll be hearing from her personally, so be prepared. Thank you so much, to hopefully sponsor.
All right, thank you, Council Colan Hayes. Council Taylor, thank you.
Thank you. So I, I just want to make a couple of announcements. Coming up next week, we have a few community meetings in Ward 5 on Sunday morning at 11:00. We'll be at the police station in the community room to talk with residents from Webster Street about the incidents that, the incident that transpired last week, and just how we can be better a little bit with traffic safety and, and help them feel safer. And then on Monday, March 18th, at 6:30 PM, we'll be at the Forestale School Cafeteria discussing the, the possibility of use for the plot of land on Goodwin Ave. that is city-owned, and starting those discussions. And then just on a level of extremely personal privilege, I need to, to wish my oldest a happy birthday tomorrow. She will be 17, and I know she's watching tonight.
Happy birthday, Emily.
So, happy birthday, Emily. Thank you.
You want to sing?
Council O'Malley?
No. So, I, the, I know, that was bad timing. Happy birthday. The Ward 4 Association will be holding our annual cleanup at Waits Mount on Sunday, April 14th, at 9:00 AM. We will do this in partnership with DJ from the Great Malden Outdoors and First Seed Zone, so please come on by. He's been getting a lot of great sponsors, and, and we're going to collaborate with different organizations. There may be an opportunity to go to a brewery after, to kind of celebrate the cleanup and, and just really cherish our, our outdoor space. So again, that would be a cleanup at Waits Mount on Sunday, April 14th, at 9:00 AM. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else? Let's see, I'm going to say, a few things. On Saturday, March 23rd, I'm, I'm working with Bike to the Sea and others to hold a cleanup along the bike trail. We're going to start at the Salemwood School at, from 9:00 to 11:00. Council Taylor's planning to be there, but everybody's welcome. And if you've gone down the trail this time of year, it's, there's a lot of trash. During the summer, we have Project Triangle do cleaning, but usually this time of year is pretty trash, so please come out, and we'll have plenty of bags and gloves and, and that type of thing. So from 9:00 to 11:00. And any students that need some community service hours, happy to do that. So wishing everybody a happy St. Patrick's Day coming up, and, as well as a glorious Ramadan as well, for, for folks who celebrate Ramadan. Any other communications, or just-
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn from Council Sika, seconded by Council O'Malley. All those in favor?
Aye.
Council is adjourned. Thank you very much, great.